We have a request for conditional use for recreational facility. This is a Winfield Township case. It's about a three acre site serviced by water and sewer. The matter was published in the Daily Herald, September 15, 2021. And we have received very few, if any, very few comments. Most of the departments and municipalities that we have circulated to have not commented at all. So who's the petitioner?
Sarah Halliday.
Ms. Halliday, how many people will testify tonight? Two? Okay, would you raise your hands and be sworn in, please?
Would you sound as where a permanent testimony about to give at this pause now here? With the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Okay, whoever is presenting, please step up to the podium. We need a survey marked as exhibit number one and a site plan marked as exhibit number two. Then anything else you have? Oh, I see you have booklets. So can we go back to the submit electronic documents during this? Okay. So we're gonna limit our hearing to about seven o'clock tonight. So if you could, if we're close, we have limited all of our hearings during this COVID period to one hour. If you're close to finishing up, we can, you know, extend that a little bit. So I don't delay things any further. Why don't you introduce yourselves? And we have a survey in here as number one. Survey with site plan as two.
Should be right.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you. My name is Brian Mulhern. I'm an attorney at an office in Hinsdale. Just a couple tidbits about me. I've handled zoning and land use work for almost 40 years. Started out representing railroads in the city of Chicago of all things for zoning and land use work, but also hooked up, represented various developers and individuals, many suburbs, city of Chicago. After a number of cases in village of Clarendon Hills where I live, I was asked to serve on the zoning board in Clarendon Hills, and I served two terms there, 10 years.
Could you slip your mask down a little bit? So one of our members is having...
That's good, okay.
Have you ever appeared before us, sir?
About 25 years ago. And I was just about to say, I met Paul out in the hallway. Some things never change because Paul was here and was my contact then. So it's good to see that some things are constant. Enough about me. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, Sarah Halliday. I've known Sarah and represented her and her businesses for almost 20 years. I've known her dad, Gene, who was also here. He won't be testifying tonight, but I've known him and represented him for about 35 years. So they're not new to me. Sarah is looking to buy this property, Butterfield Road, subject only to getting zoning approval. And what she's looking for, as you know, is a conditional use. And it's specifically listed as a recreational facility and within that subtopic, a stable. The current owner of the property has signed off on his consent for Sarah to pursue this application. And as I believe you know, this property is owned, R2, single family, but it has a large horse barn on it. It has a smaller barn and workshop building on it and a large fenced corral and arena area with horses. They were, the horses were out there this afternoon as I drove by. The best way to describe the plans for this property is really for me at this point to turn over to Sarah herself. She can explain who she is, what her business is. And then once she's finished with that, we'll circle back around and address the...
Could we get a little more detail on the current use before we hear what is being proposed?
Sure.
And the surrounding properties?
Surrounding properties. To the east, to the south, is all forest preserve. Immediately to the west is a single family residence. But immediately beyond that, to the west, is also forest preserve. At that point, Butterfield Road is a divided highway. So there is a long distance away to the north to any residences. And everything to the, to the east, to the south, and to the west beyond the adjoining property is all forest preserve. On the property, there's a very large barn with, Sarah, do you know how many horses could be stored in there?
Right now, there's 22 horse stalls.
So 22 horse stalls in the, in the barn now. There's a smaller barn, which is actually more of a workshop. And the front part of the property closest to Butterfield Road is, it's got a white wooden fence surrounded, a large area which could be called a corral or it could be an arena. And that's where the horses that are there now are, that's where they hang out during the day.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, with regard to the plans, Sarah, you're the best to talk about that.
I've been working at Sarah's Pony Rides as an owner and operator since 2004. I grew up loving horses and ponies, and I saw the desire for the public, especially the urban areas, to experience pony rides and the animals that I have. I feel that my services would be very valuable here. And what I'd like to do is create a beautiful estate in that three per parcel where I can store my, house my ponies and my livestock animals to bring the Sarah's Pony Rides animals there and house them. I would also like to live there. And the pole barn that's there right now, I'd like to make that into my residence and actually live there with my animals. And animals need 24/7 care, so I'd like to be there with them. So this would be my residence slash having my ponies and the livestock animals there living with me. I currently operate out of Willow Springs. The company has hired variety of events, including birthday parties, fundraisers, festivals, church events, nursing homes, family reunions, church picnics. We do a lot of family get togethers. We do everything off of site. We don't, we're not going to bring any of the public to the land. We wanted to just bring ponies and our animals to the facilities that we're going to have the, the set. So basically, I'd like to just convert this land into the pole barn into my home and the barn for my ponies and my livestock animals to live there. I've always loved that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but just define livestock animals in terms of quantity and quality.
Sure, I do have listed in there the inventory of all the animals. We're going to have horses, we're going to have ponies, goats, sheep, llamas, and alpacas.
What's the numbers?
And they're all miniature sized. We don't have any full size animals. There are miniature goats, miniature sheep, miniature alpacas, miniature llamas. Just because we do use them for events and parties, we don't have really big animals like camels and cows. We do all little stuff.
Sure, the quantity is...
The quantity. We're going to have eight horses, 36 ponies, 21 goats, 14 sheep, three llamas, and three alpacas.
I missed the one after ponies and before sheep, that 12 something, I think, was, was that goats?
21 goats.
21, so, thank you. Go right ahead.
What I'd like to do is come in and really clean up the property, make a beautiful estate out of it. It's already beautiful right now, but it's overgrown with bushes and weeds. I don't want to take any trees down, but I would really like to clean up the property and move the fence to the property line and just make it really very nice, very curb appeal for when people drive by and see it. That's about what I'd like to do with the property. I won't, again, I won't have any public there. This is, everything is going to be done offsite.
Since everything, so hours of operation is always a big issue for us on conditional uses. But your hours of operation is 24/7, but nothing's happening on the property except you and the various animals. Is that right?
That's correct. I do have operation of hours listed in the pamphlet. Our hours are from seven to seven. And then after that, all the staff go home. And that's for feeding, turning out, cleaning the stalls, cleaning the turnouts, and bringing the horses back in and feeding them again.
So you're going to have, so we haven't seen this before. So when you say your staff, you're going to have staff?
Correct.
Tell us about staff.
Oh, we have three full-time staff that they'll arrive there at seven o'clock in the morning. They'll feed the animals, they'll then turn out the animals. Then they'll be cleaning the stalls, bringing, rotating turnouts. And then in the afternoon, we'll be bringing them back in, feeding them, cleaning the turnouts, and cleaning up the area again. Those three full-time staff are going to be in charge of the animal care.
I have a sort of a general confusion here. When I saw a request for a recreational facility, I thought something was going to happen on the property, you know, pony rides or whatever. But your testimony is that you're going to board these various animals and then transport them elsewhere for the recreational activity.
That's correct.
So can I just ask either counsel, what is your opinion for staff? What is your opinion of the number of animals that are permitted in an R2? This is R2, isn't it? Yeah, don't we have some issue about number of animals?
So there are prohibitions on number of animals in a residential district by right. So if you're, if you have a residential, if you have a house, you're entitled to X amount of animals. If you have property that's over 40,000 square feet of land, you're entitled to X amount of horses. This would be an extraordinary land use, which is permitted as a recreational use in a residential zoning district.
What is the recreation?
Well, the recreation would be the animals. It is the closest thing in the zoning ordinance that would allow this type of activity. If this activity were served by public sewer and water, they would not need any zoning relief. Recreational activities are considered places of assembly in the zoning ordinance. And places of assembly are allowed as a right on a piece of property that's at least 100,000 square feet in size, but this property is. And is on a principal arterial roadway and takes direct access to the principal arterial roadway, which this property does. The only issue and why they're before the board for conditional use is that they don't have public sewer and water available to the site. They're on something in well.
The only reason that they're before the board to conduct a recreational activity is because they don't have sewer and water. But I don't understand how this is a recrea, what is the recreation that's being performed on this site? Anywhere to have the...
I'll leave that, I'll leave that to the attorney of the petitioner.
I think the only reason that it's referred to as a recreational facility is because the subcategory underneath that is a stable. So the application worked upwards from what the zoning ordinance says, referring to a stable, and the stable just happens to be in the category of a recreational facility.
Okay, I've got a little work to do in trying to understand how this is an appropriate request under, in this zoning district, but we'll...
Okay, just our emphasis is that it's really the term stable as opposed to the general category of recreational facility.
Okay. So nothing, no visitors will come to this site? There will be no business conducted on this site?
There will not be any business on this property.
What about signage?
I would like to have a sign. I would propose that later after we get everything ready, you know, everything. If we can get a sign out front, that'd be wonderful, but if we can't, that would be fine too.
What, the purpose of a sign is to advertise or something generally?
Right, we would advertise offsite pony parties. Let us bring the ponies to you. And we would have the gate shut. People could not drive onto the property, would strictly be private.
Okay, go right ahead. I know I've interrupted, but trying to understand what's going on.
You know, I just wanted to say that right now I operate just one acre and we keep the property immaculate clean. I put some pictures in the brochure there, in the pamphlet. And this three acres, it might sound like there's going to be a lot of animals there, but it's a lot more land than we have, and we use only one acre right now. There are miniature horses, the ponies, the animals. It would be wonderful for them to have the turnout. It would be wonderful for me to be able to live there, build a house out of the pole barn. And I just think I could see a beautiful estate made there.
How many people will live at the site with you?
There will be two people.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
I could probably talk all day about pony parties and petting zoos. I love what I do. I started here in DuPage in Winfield in 2000. I did trail rides. In 2004, I started doing pony rides and petting zoos. I just kind of taken off from there. I love what I do. I love sharing the joy with people in the community. We don't just strictly do the children's birthday parties. We do nursing homes, we do therapeutic rides, we bring the animals out to them. I just, I love what I do. I love this area. I think that it's, you know, I'd have a great fit being back in this area.
Well, I love animal lovers. And the more I watch the news, the more I'm tempted to associate more with animals than, oh, never mind about. Okay, are we ready for questions from the members of the board? Or do you have more that you want to present?
We were just going to, if you don't mind, address as a sort of a tag team between us, how Sarah's plans would meet the standards that are in the ordinance?
Okay.
As a baseline, any conditional use is not supposed to injure the neighborhood or be detrimental to the public welfare. But then beyond that, there are seven specific standards in your ordinance. And if you don't mind, I'll just present the particular standard and Sarah will respond. The first standard is that your proposed use would not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property.
My plans will no way alter the lighting on the property. The business is not involved in any air polluting activities. The property currently is used as a horse property. It will be kept clean of the animal waste to control any odor. I keep the property very clean. And every day, we clean up all the turnouts, all the stalls. We put them in a manure trailer off the ground, and we dump the manure at a local landscaper or wherever we can find to, so it would stay very clean.
Second standard is that your proposed use would not increase any hazard from fire or other dangers.
I've been in business for 21 years, and safety has always been the top priority for me. I have not had one incident in 21 years. I'm keenly, keenly aware of the fire hazards that the stables present. I always have a safety plan in place. I will have smoke detectors, smoke alarms, fire extinguishers every 75 feet, a remote camera system. I will ensure that electric is up to code. I use temperature controlled fans that shut off if they overheat, and that hay is always stored in a haylot. And I will also be living on the property.
And no, I'm not supposed to testify, but I've represented Sarah during the entire 20 years of her business. And I can attest that she's a safety freak. The third standard is that you would not be diminishing the value of the land and the building in the vicinity of your proposed conditional use.
I believe that I will increase the value of the land and buildings. I plan on making improvements that will maximize the square footage of the land. I'll be cleaning up all the overgrowth, the bushes, and making the property secure by having it completely fenced in. And I plan to build and have a double fence in the front, this way that there's no escape animals.
And given the chairman's question about people coming to the property, the fourth standard addresses that your use would not unduly increase traffic congestion in the public streets.
The facility will not be open to the public. We are a traveling pony party and petting zoo operation. The drivers that take our trucks are trained to be extremely cautious and safe when driving the animals to the parties. They will use all safety measures when pulling out onto Butterfield Road. Anytime that we have our trucks and our drivers and their trailers, we always... The trucks, so there'll be two people, one person in the passenger seat, one person driving. And we always try to make sure that we're as safety as we can pulling out. And we always have a training for all of our drivers.
Just to reemphasize one thing that Sarah mentioned earlier, the, the animals go to the people as opposed to the people coming to the animals. And so that has a very minimal impact on traffic. The next standard, Sarah, is that you would not be increasing any potential flood damage for adjacent property.
We don't plan to do anything with the grade of the property. We would just keep it as, as it is now. We would just be moving the fencing around, but we wouldn't be changing the grade.
In a somewhat related standard to the earlier one about safety, the sixth standard says that your proposed use would not incur additional public expense for fire protection, rescue, or relief.
Again, I'm very safety conscious, particularly when it comes to the fire protection. I require safety training for all my staff. It's always safety first. The wellbeing of the animals is my top priority. We will have the entire property fenced with the front being double fenced, and the animals cannot escape. Again, I haven't had any incidents in 21 years. I am a safety freak. I just go over safety all the time with the staff that I have.
And finally, the last standard in the ordinance is that your use would not impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or general welfare of the people of the county or create a nuisance.
I'm very proud of my reputation that I built over the years as the largest provider of the pony rides and petting zoos in the area and outline the measures that I will take to ensure the physical safety of the property, the animals, and the state, our staff. We also provide a social service. What could be more wholesome than providing city dwellers with a bit of country? We provide a safe space for families to come together and talk to the animals, a therapeutic effect on the animals as well now.
And not to emphasize it too much, but that therapeutic effect is all offsite.
That's correct, it's offsite. We have a couple different instructors that use the animals for therapy. We take them to their facility. They use our animals to, with children with anxiety, with people that have anxiety, not just children. And they use them for therapeutic, they're not even riding them, some of them are just touching the animals. And that's all offsite.
Thank you. Counsel, I must agree that you truly are a zoning professional. 99.9% of the time, people read the seven standards and say, we comply, we comply, we comply, we comply. Very infrequently, we get effectively an argument with factual support as to each one, so thank you.
Thank you. As I mentioned at the beginning, I've sat on your side of the table. And I know that sometimes these situations are difficult to address. And it's especially difficult to address if you don't have anything to hang your hat on. So we tried to, thanks for putting up with the tag team approach.
Okay. Can we just learn a little? I don't know if any of these standards deal with animal care necessarily. Of course, you know, the, the standards are really directed at the impact on neighbors, people, et cetera. But maybe I'm outside the scope of our true area of authority, but could you tell us a little bit about animal care? Sarah's the best to talk about that.
And there is a neighbor to the west of the property. And we would be very courteous to make sure that we're not causing extra noise. Like, I don't have roosters. I don't have any animals that are going to make a lot of noise. Like I said, we keep it very clean, so he wouldn't be smelling any extra smell over there. But we do, you know, we try to make everything safe. Yes, I'm going to have trucks and trailers there. We're going to be pulling in and out, but we're going to try to make everything safe. We're going to try not to inconvenience him. We're going to try to keep everything quiet. We're not going to have the public there, so there's not going to be any parties, little kids yelling and screaming. Like, we have camps now in Willow Springs. We're not going to be doing that there. Just better respect that we have a neighbor, and we don't want to do it on the property because we'll be living there.
What about veterinary care?
I have a referral letter in there for my veterinarian. I've been using him for 23 years. And anytime I have an emergency, he knows that I don't cry wolf, he comes out immediately. We have a, I have my USDA license, it's also in there. And we get our vaccinations done, we do their feet, we do their worming. We're very on top of all of the animal care. A lot of times when we go out to parties, we have to prove that we have vaccinations, that we have, you know, healthy animals. Sometimes if I see one, you know, take pictures, see the animals that we have. So they, they are very well taken care of.
Okay, I'm not sure if I indicated this, but I said that we require a survey as exhibit one and a site plan as exhibit two. We have those two exhibits. Can I just take the rest of these as group exhibit three from your packet? Okay, great, we'll do that for the record. Now, what's, whose township is this? Winfield. Yeah, Winfield. So, is that...
Yeah, hold on a second.
The home on the west side there, what's that being used for?
That's my house.
Okay.
This was actually held, I think, with people. I'll get out, we'll give you an opportunity soon to finish these questions.
Which one?
It's a residential, and I'm not sure exactly what he does, except he has goats.
Okay.
You had covered it pretty well about, because the park with all the animals. I mean, I love the smell of farm, but some people don't. So it sounds like from your reputation, you keep things clean and keep the smell down. That's what I, what my concern would be with for a neighbor. So that's the only thing I was looking at at this point.
Yeah, I drive my staff crazy with how clean I want things, you know? Like, every day we clean, you know, just because it is, you know, I want to live there. I don't live at the stable I'm running right now, but I, we always keep it very clean.
So from your past, Willow Springs?
Yes.
Your neighbors are no problem with smell?
They're no problem.
Okay, because it sounds like, gosh, you're going to increase your size of land, which makes it a lot nicer for the animals.
It's going to be wonderful, you know? We do our best with the turnouts right now, but it would be wonderful to keep them out 6 to 8 hours a day.
Okay, definitely, I'm so far.
Thank you. It seems like you don't plan to do anything to the buildings. That's what you testified. Everything will remain as is on the property.
No, I'd like to convert the pole barn, the 40 by 60 barn, into a residence. So I can live there right now, it's just being used as a workshop.
All right, so the barn which is being shown, I can't figure it out on this. Okay.
The smaller building is the one that I would be converting into a residence.
So that you're going to convert into a residence?
Correct.
Okay, now, have you checked the square footage of the horse barn, which I suppose is the stable, with the requirements that horses, ponies, and other...
With the requirements that horses, ponies, and other livestock would be required to have?
I don't know the requirement to deal with.
Like, you say you have eight horses. And the ordinance says that you need 275 square feet of the stable space should be limited for each permitted horse. So that, to me, works out to 2,200 square feet. And then the ponies, but again, I don't understand. These are all miniature?
There's eight full sized horses and then the rest of the animals are all miniatures.
So Mr. Haas, does that alter the requirement? No? Okay. So then the ponies would be 9,900 square feet. And I don't know about goat, sheep, and llamas. And pardon my ignorance, I don't know what alpacas are.
They're just, they're smaller than llamas and they're made of fiber, like llamas are wool.
So I.
They're just, they're small animals.
My, my only question is, do you have enough space for all these animals?
Well, like I said, right now we're operating on a smaller space, just one acre. And the barn is actually smaller than this barn. And we've been, you know, doing it. You know, we turn, we have people, that's the staff that come out. They turn the animals out. They're outside during the day. And then we bring them in tonight so that, at nighttime, so they all have their individual stalls to eat, drink. And then they get turned back out the next day.
All right, that's Cook County, right?
I'm in Cook County, yes.
Yeah. I don't know if the requirements are different.
I just want to, I want to clarify something. When I was answering Mr. Hakim's question, I was off mic. The citation that you're referring to in the zoning ordinance is a, is a, is not a requirement. It is an allowance. So if someone wanted to have a stable, we would allow up to 275 square feet for a stable. They're not required to have a stable for the horses. So once again, that's not a requirement. It's, it's an allowance that they could go up to.
Okay. And what about the requirement that when there are horses, the first 40,000, I don't know where exactly it is, but the first 40,000 square feet is for the first horse and then 20,000 for every subsequent horse?
That, as I mentioned earlier, if it was, if this was a, just purely a single family home, one would be allowed as a right to have one horse for the first 40,000 square feet of land. And then an additional horse for each additional 20,000 square feet of land they have. In this instance, the recreational use, conditional use would effectively override that requirement because this is not going to be a permitted as a right, single family home. This is going to be a conditional use for this regular recreational activity.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. That takes care of my issues.
Just want to piggyback a little bit on Mr. Hakim's questions because you did testify that you have 22 stalls. Obviously, you have more animals. Does that mean that you're doubling up on some of the stalls with some of the animals? Or are you going to build it out and make it fit the number of animals you have?
What I'd like to do is, in the indoor arena, is we're going to build the little pony stalls around the outside of their arena. And then the horse stalls that would be there, they would be for the eight horses and then the petting zoo animals because they have walkout stalls where they're able to walk out, which would be wonderful for the zoo animals.
Okay. And then you just had a question. I don't know if you're required to do this and all, but I've seen fire issues with farms and rural areas and they're not pleasant. But my question is just, are you going to have direct connection to the fire department or?
Well, I have an alarm now. And if there is a fire, it directly goes to alarm.com and then they notify 911, the police and the fire.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you. Okay. And our members appearing remotely, do you have any, either of you have any questions?
I'm fine. Thank you for a great presentation. Excuse me, Barry. Barry, I wasn't finished yet.
Oh.
So, well, so thank, thank the people, the petitioners for a great presentation. I very much enjoyed it. And Barry, you may go. Be nice.
Thank you.
I have a question, well, two really. With the events that you have horses going in and out, how many events do you do a day? And how many, do you have a set time that they leave and get back by?
We don't have a set time that they leave and get back by. But most of our parties are on the weekends. And some of the drivers will leave as early as nine or eight o'clock, eight or nine o'clock in the morning. And they may go to seven or eight o'clock at night. And then we have some drivers that come in and just do one party. They may be gone just for four hours.
Okay. And then my only other question is, you're on well-incepted, correct?
That's correct.
And what do, what would you utilize if there was a fire for water? They bring a pumper in or do you have access to water?
Um, I have not thought about that. I would look into it and make sure that we have a water supply enough to, if something was to happen.
Okay. Thank you. And I, I would just comment on the attorney's presentation. It is the first one since I've been on there that addressed the standards in a proper way than just saying, we meet them all. So congratulations and thank you. And maybe this is a learning video for people that should tune in and figure out how to do one.
Thank you very much. Um, I just note on this, on what I think is your site plan that you show, you're going to fence the area. You haven't asked for any relief. So can you just give us a little bit, how high is the fence? What's the opacity? What's the fence made out of?
Sure. I'd like to do the, the four rail vinyl fencing. It's five foot high. I would like to fence the entire property line, the entire property. So it's completely fenced. Um, it would, we use it now. It's very durable. It's a pretty fence. And we would also, we would have the fence around the entire property. And then we'd also have fencing inside that property, just so we have turnouts.
Okay. I don't know.
Um, I mean, the turnouts will be something like 60 by maybe 150.
Yeah, we, we have, uh, it's depicted on the site plan.
I did bring a larger site plan if you'd like to see it, just because it is so small.
For purposes of the fence, I can kind of see what's going on here. I don't know what specifically you propose. You haven't asked for any exceptions or variations to the fencing guidelines. So before we proceed, counsel, make sure that the fence comply, work with the staff. Make sure your proposed fencing complies with the ordinance. Perhaps Laura will have to consider an exception under the conditional use. All right. Let's take, then you two folks are with the petitioner, is that right?
That's correct.
And you wanted to speak, sir? Why don't you exchange places if you would? Do we have to lock down the podium? No? It's astounding. I can't keep track of the rules. So sir, when you, when you begin your testimony, state your name, spell your name. Tell us where you live in relation to the property, although I think we know from your comment. And then we'll have to ask you to be sworn in.
Okay. I apologize. I was notified of this meeting going through like 48 hours. But if I could just leave this and then I have something, stuff you can use as exhibits. But let me just hang this a second and then I'll come and introduce myself.
All right. Are you presenting exhibits to us?
Um, I, I, it's not an exhibit. It's, it's, uh, myself and I'll walk you through the whole.
Okay. Let's have you sworn in first.
Okay.
Would you raise your hand, please? You just silently swear affirm the testimony about to give this clause are hearing, need the truth, the held truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you God.
Yes.
And then your name?
I am Steve Broak.
Spell your last name.
B O R O W I A K. And no middle name.
And where do you live in relation to this? What's your address?
I am on 27W 345 Butterfield Road.
And where is that in relation to this property?
Yes, the 2.9 acre parcel to the west of the property that we're talking about.
Okay. Now, I don't know what you propose. If you are going to make reference to a document, that reference will be in the record. And we need to have, we need to make it an exhibit, which means whatever you point to or refer to or whatever, you got to leave with us.
Okay, that's fine. Let me first, that's an aerial photograph of the property in question. It just gives you a better perspective of where we're at. I have lived there since 1991. I have an 86 and 87 year old parents that I care for. I have an intimate knowledge of this property because back in 1998, I was the one that petitioned Paul Haas with the former owner to open the original horse building back in 1998. Oh, sorry. So what I can tell you today is my history with the property. I have pictures of the property with a topographic that I'll leave with you guys today. My concerns on the property is, in the, addressing your issue of how many square foot per horse, the current R2 zoning is 40,000 acres for the first horse and 20,000 for each additional horse. So the, the first taker would take one horse and then the limit on that property would be the half acre would add five horses on a 2.9 acre parcel. That's what's in the R2 zoning. My concerns are the density of air. When you look at, in my experience, I've been a veteran for 38 years. I also worked at Cosley Park, which is only 2.3 acres. And that density of animals, when you go from five horses to eight horses to all the other animal that goes along with it on that property, it's going to be very difficult. Our concerns as neighbors next door are the smell that goes along with that, the disposal, the density of the animals on that property. Even though the forest preserve takes up two sides of that property, we live on the other side. And, and yes, I'm intimately involved with the 4H and I'm intimately involved with the Bayes County Fair. But I know from those activities, having goats and chickens and horses in my other years, what it takes and what, what time, effort, animals, manure, the whole works that goes along with that. When I built that original barn, there was 18 stalls inside of it. I have not been in there since July of 2003, when I had the settlement with the Cormart owner. At that time, there is difficulty with the property. There is a drainage issue that was supposedly fixed at that time. It still directs the water flow. And if you look at the map, which he has on your map in front of you, you see a line that's the, this large parking lot. And from the photograph, we got all the rain from this, too big for the lot, FAR building that's there. Is that water's got to go somewhere. Where it's directed to is essentially to my house and barn next door. So one of the issues we brought up, and it was supposed to be corrected back in July of 2003, was that it was supposed to be, I put set money aside with the former owner, that Swale was supposed to fix the problem. It has not fixed the problem. And so the water runs from that lot into my lot, in my garage, and also in my barn. And the water gets so bad that you'll see, and I have pictures of the evergreen trees are so wet all the time, they've fallen over. So my concerns in, there's initially a drainage problem that's been there for years. And it was supposed to be corrected. But my concern is with those activities, preparing for the parties, people coming and going, staff members, the peaceful little tranquil three acre parcel that my parents and I have had since 91 is, is not going to be that tranquil. And it's going to be totally different. And certainly they have a turn lane set aside on Butterfield Road for us returning. One of the things I petitioned for, because I had horses too, is to make the turnaround heading west on Butterfield extra wide so that I could get a truck and a trailer in and out of those areas as we go along. But knowing the sheer density, having worked at Cosley and knowing the sheer density of that many animals in that little space and being next door, it's going to create a problem as far as with my adjacent lot. And I have the same 2.9 acre parcels they have.
Is that it?
Yes.
Do you want to indicate that you object or that?
I, I object.
Okay. Good. Thank you, sir. Have a seat again if you would. Mr. Haas, can we get, in light of the testimony, can we get, we don't yet have comments or an opinion from Stormwater. Could you bring this to their attention and just give us advice? Counsel, time for a wrap up, I think. Let me see if there's anything. No, I don't have any other questions. So you want to make a concluding statement?
I, I couldn't say anything better than Sarah already has. I think we've spelled out what her plans are, what exists on the property now, and that her request meets the ordinance standards. And that basically would be our summary.
Okay. And you are a contract purchaser? Do you have, so now undoubtedly you know the next step is we refer this to our recommendation meeting, which usually occurs the first week of, the first Thursday of the month. That's upon us quite soon. So it's likely that this would go to our recommendation session in November and then be finalized through the additional steps in the county near the end of November. Is that consistent with your contract?
All, all conditions relate to and start from a granting of zoning approval.
Oh, okay.
So fine.
Well, then, let's tee this up for our November recommendation meeting, which is November 4. Thank you for your presentation. I, I did not indicate, but I should indicate that we have two objective exhibits this evening. The first is the photographs and the second is whatever that says. I can't read it from here. Oh, grading plan. Okay. Thank you very much. If there's nothing else from any member of the board, we're concluded and adjourned for the evening.
Thank you for your consideration.
Right. Thank you.